Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for coming tonight. My name is Michelle Stadle. I'm the Silver Falls Education Association President. And we are excited to host these potential school board candidates, potential school board members, and just be able to hear from them, hear what's important to them, their reasons for running, what they are hoping to achieve by being on the school board, and just the opportunity for you guys to get to ask questions. So once again, thank you so much for being here. And I'd like to introduce Angie Miller, who is our secretary and who worked really hard. I'm sorry, Nancy Miller. Too many Millers. That's Angie, she's over there. But Nancy worked so hard putting this on. So if we could just give her a round of applause. Thank you. So protocol first, and then I'll do the introductions. You guys generate the questions. So if you come up with more questions as you listen, we brought the cards in at the back. And Jen is walking up and down with those. And if you raise your hand with them, we'll have a runner come and pick them up too, so you don't have to get out. Okay, I think that's it, questions. They can be addressed to the group as a whole or individuals. Everyone will have a chance to answer the questions, and we'll rotate the order of how you answer the questions. Ken, please, you have two minutes to make opening remarks. And Mr. Lucero is down there with a timer, so he's in charge of that. If you see his hand go up, you know you're out of time. Is that how you're gonna do that? Okay, perfect. All right. And then for your answer questions, you have one minute to answer to those. All right. So, no, I don't really need to introduce the candidates. You're gonna introduce yourself. We have Janet Alenak, Leslie Martin, Lori McLaughlin, Tom Buchholz, and Dawn Tacker, who are all here from around our great area of school district. And then our presenter, our moderator, one over here. Sorry, I'm tired. I have a horrible headache first thing this morning, so I'm fighting that stuff. Andy Morgan. And I've been fortunate enough to know Andy Morgan since I began in 1992. She was one of my amazing mentor teachers, along with Jean Edwards, who's sitting right out there too. And she was excellent teacher role model for me as I first started teaching. And great companion, going to Mariners games, riding the train, and part of one of the best book groups on the West Coast. I'm not ashamed to say. There's at least four of us here. So she taught at social studies and speech and debate at SHS from 1976... I was six years old. ...to 1999, and then moved to ODE until 2018. So she's recently retired as the social sciences curriculum specialist and other roles, including tech specialist, compliance specialist, legislative coordinator, and help desk specialist in the Office of Teaching and Learning. Please give a warm welcome back to Andrea Morgan. Did you have any questions? All good? Okay. So, to begin, I think I'm supposed to let you know that Scan TV will have tonight's forum available. Do we know when?
May 8.
By May 8. So if you want to invite others to listen in, see what went on at this event, it'll be available for you there. As far as the question orders, so that you know, when we finally get to questions, I will ask the first person, then it will just kind of go down the row. The second question will start with the second person, go down the row, come on back, and we'll rotate through questions in that way. Before we begin, one of the things I want to say is just how important this really is. As I worked at ODE, what I realized is that it's... There's so much in the state of Oregon's education process and policy that has to do with local board policy. A lot of times, people would call me as the help desk person and say, you know, "Can you write in here and slap people around because they're doing whatever?" It's never about this district, okay? But other districts. And what I'd have to tell them is that actually, you know, it's not a matter for the state with that issue. The issue really is a matter of local board policy. So the people that you are electing to your school board have an incredible amount of decision-making for the students in this district. So as we ask questions and you're thinking about who you're going to vote for finally, I hope you'll keep that in mind, that these are the people that truly are going to impact children's education and the future of this community. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. I think we begin with the introductions. And so each person has two minutes to begin. And so let's begin with Janet.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight and for being invested in this board election. Your participation and who you choose to elect to your board really does matter. My name is Janet Alenak, and I'm running to serve all the students of Silver Falls School District. My husband, Chris, and I are parents to three students, two in high school and one in college. I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit disability advocacy organization, and I volunteer in our community with our families, our high school families, as a college prep advisor. I want to share with you quickly why I'm running for school board. Plain and simple, our district faces challenges and opportunities that need to be addressed proactively with a high level of skilled engagement from board leadership. Just a few hours ago, the Oregon House of Representatives passed HB 3427, which provides additional funding for education. We are now at a critical point in long-range planning, and we need a depth of skills on the board to tackle decisions with the best data and analysis, and most importantly, with transparency and accountability for teachers, students, and taxpayers. My academic and professional backgrounds are in economics and public policy analysis, board management, strategic planning, grant writing, and organizational leadership. I have the skills to help guide our board through the creation of what I believe should be a 15-year, long-range vision of excellence for our district. I have experienced managing change and building consensus around common goals. Like many of you, I was blessed with an amazing education, and I believe that the students of our district deserve nothing less. We have an amazing, amazing student body. We have heard parents from other districts on social media say, "Bravo, Silver Falls! Your students are demonstrating character that you should be proud of," and that is why I'm running. Our students deserve leadership that honors their extraordinary potential and works hard to ensure they have what they need to meet it. Our students and teachers show up every day, and they give their very best, and they deserve us to do the same. Thank you.
Next is Leslie.
First, thank you to the Silver Falls Education Association for hosting this event, as they do, I think, every election, or at least the last couple. It's a good event, as always. My name is Leslie Martin, and I am a graduate of Silverton Union High School, aka "The Old High School", as are both of my parents. I was born here in Silverton. My parents' work took us away for a few years, and I returned right before starting sixth grade at Robert Frost and then moving on to Mark Twain before the high school. My parents, my mom, went to school at the old Crooked Finger School before it merged with Scottsville's. She made me promise not to tell you what year that was. And my dad went to Silvercrest. I graduated from Schmeckade Community College, where I obtained my associate's degree in business management. I currently work for Marion County as an employee benefits specialist. And in the past, I've worked in union and non-union environments in the construction and healthcare industries, in both in office manager setting and in payroll and as an HR professional. I've got one child, Austin. He's in our homes tonight. He has gone to school in town at Eugene Field, Robert Frost, Silverton Middle School, and is currently a freshman here in our high school. He's involved in Key Club, Spanish Club, and has joined in piano lessons at Soundstream Music Carantone. And I'm biased, but he's very good. Over the years, I have been a volunteer in our district, in the classroom, chaperoning various events such as dances, field trips, graduation parties, all of the fun stuff. I've served as an officer on the Robert Frost and Silverton Middle School parent-teacher club groups. And I've also served in our community for this district on the focus groups that were recently held last fall. After that, I was appointed to the Strategic Visioning Plan Leadership Team, which that was a really interesting experience. If anybody has questions, please let me know. I'm running because I believe there's work to be done in our district, not just on facilities or providing students with a well-rounded education, but also rebuilding trust and promoting transparency between the board and community.
Your introductions.
My name is Lori McLaughlin, and I am term officer. Can you hear me now?
All right. My name is Lori McLaughlin. I am running for Zone 3. I have over 25 years of educational experience. I have taught junior high in high school. I'm currently employed at Schmeckade Community College. I teach understanding art. And I do and see every time I walk into the classroom the power of fine arts and how it impacts our students. I also am a former business owner of the White Oak Gallery, which allowed many creative souls to gather and present their artworks as well. I hold a bachelor of fine arts with an emphasis on printmaking and painting and also a master's of interdisciplinary studies from Oregon State, dealing with theater arts, art history, and studio arts. To run for the school board is an absolute honor, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity where we could all share our passion and what we want to do for the board. I have a three-fold purpose for being here, and that is, one, I do want to see equity and equality continue in our school district. It's absolutely essential. My heart also goes for those who are identified as homeless. And what can we do for them? What resources can we provide so that they feel secure in their education? The students are so important, and we want to give them that confidence and security that they deserve. They too deserve the potential to learn, as we all do. I also know that the fine arts needs to be upheld as well. We know that music is an extension of math, and it helps us with logic, and it helps us also with language. So we do need to keep our education very comprehensive for our students, and I thank you.
Next is Tom.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any prepared remarks, but my name is Tom Buchholz. I'm running for my third term. We, let's see. I was, went to grade school out of monitor, went to Silverton Union High School, third-generation farmer in the area. My wife is a teacher in this school district. We have three kids in the high school. And I just, I guess, I just, I'm really proud of this school district. I think we have close to a 90% graduation rate. I love our subgroups. When I look into the success rate of the subgroups, we're getting really good results there. I want to continue on that, continue on that track record of improvement. I certainly have noted, you know, I think all the board, the current board has certainly taken note of the input that the music reduction, the music of the, the reduction of some of the music teaching that we've had in the district. I really appreciate Lori's comments about the, it's an extension of the fine arts, and I really am motivated. And I want, the fine arts, it really helps people with their social and emotional. And I know my son, we called him in, and he had a carpet, carpet lessons at the Silverton Park. I can't remember who the gentleman was that did that. You know, and it's important for the school district to do what they can, but we're really facing some really tough budget battles right now. We really like it. I really want to compliment the Silver Falls Education Association for choosing to make some school districts some... Okay. Thanks for choosing to walk in instead of walk out on May 8. Thank you.
Next is Dawn.
Thanks again for hosting us tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight to listen and to ask some great questions, I'm sure. My name is Dawn Tacker. I am the owner and director of Traversed Dyslexia, which is a clinic here in Silverton and now coming in Salem that helps students in grades K through 12 to learn to read and write. My husband and I have two sons, a freshman at Silverton High School and a third grader at Silvercrest. So why am I running? Why am I here? We could all have other things to do. So like many people, I think my story starts with my kids. When our two sons were diagnosed a few years ago with dyslexia and DDD, like many kids with learning differences, they didn't qualify for special ed. And I realized pretty quickly it was going to be up to me to figure out how to help them. So fast forward a few years, I was at what's my training? I remedied both my kids, and they're doing fantastic in school. And we have a fantastic support system for them here. I went on to help other students with dyslexia. And seriously, I could brag all night about these kids. They are amazing. I know what it means, because we've had to do this in our practice, to be student-centered, and I know how to help kids be successful. I want to put my expertise to work for all of our kids in the district. Serving on the board is the best way for me to have a greater impact in our community. So what do I bring to the board? I joke around, but annoying people laugh, but my superpower is big-picture thinking. We all have superpowers, and that one is mine. I have extensive experience in strategic planning and progress monitoring. I also, I'm gonna date myself, but I have 25 years of financial management and budget experience. I would describe myself as pretty conservative fiscally. I'm very concerned about being careful with taxpayer dollars. I have a bachelor's degree in economics from the American University and a master's degree in international relations from Georgetown University and project management experience from the federal level all the way down to municipal level. I absolutely believe in the power of a public education. I'm the first in my family to go to a four-year college as a result of that excellent education. And I'm really proud of the work that I've done for the district with parents, teachers, administrators, staff, and would be happy to bring that experience for the board. Thank you.
Now that you've had a chance to meet them briefly, we will move into the questions that were generated by you as you came through the door. Please also be aware that if we have time this evening, we're going to take time for more questions as you have them from the floor. So this may not have been your only opportunity if you filled out a card. So first question. Are you ready? Because they're, they didn't, they're not going to let me start with easy ones. They're, they're going right, right to it. So this is the question. I will give you this much, and then I'll let you know who gets to go first. How important do you feel teacher and staff wages are to the success of our schools? How important do you feel teacher and staff wages are to the success of our schools? And so we're going to begin at the beginning. Janet, would you take that question first?
So I like to think of our teachers as being our boots on the ground. They are the ones who interact every day with students. They know what students need. They're our experts. Teachers who are supported, who are adequately and appropriately compensated, who feel respected and valued, they're the ones who teach well, and the students feel it and they experience it. So that's just a question, very important. And I think it can be a component of teacher turnover, staff turnover, but not all the time. We need to take a look at why turnover exists. But in terms of compensation, we all need to be fairly compensated. It's how we value one another in our economy and in our society. And this is not a, as much as it's a work of the heart for a lot of people, it's a job and it's their family income.
I agree, Jen, it's important. Nobody likes to work for free or below what they are worth. Nobody likes to feel not valued. We all know and we have heard that our teachers put in many hours outside of their contract hours, outside of their school day. They provide and pay for many of their own school supplies due to budgetary restrictions, and those are not acceptable things. We have so many school districts within 15 to 20 minutes that our teachers can choose to go to if they so desire. So teacher and staff wage is important for retention because who is going to stay in the Silver Falls School District if they can only drive 15 minutes to make a considerably larger amount of money?
That's good. Yes, I believe that there is value monetarily, but there is also value of the person who, and I'm talking about the teachers, who apply their passion to the classroom and teach. I do think the monetary aspect is important. People are supporting their families. They're supporting their livelihoods. But the needed respect for that as well, I believe, can be given back both ways. I do believe that when you do pay people well, along with that comes respect and acknowledging their skill set and what they're offering to their programs. I've talked to many teachers who are telling me how they're writing grants for their programs to build them and to make them more viable, excuse me, to their classroom. So yes, both are equally important and need to be upheld. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, this is a pretty easy question to answer because, I mean, it's obviously links to student success because your best teachers can go and get a job somewhere else. Everybody, as I just kind of attested, you can drive 15 minutes and get better pay. So obviously, to maintain the best teachers, we need to have competitive wages, obviously. Thank you.
So as an economist, I would tell you that price and quantity are interrelated as a supply and demand. If we want to keep our very talented staff, we need to compensate them appropriately. To attract the very best talent, we need to make sure that the entire package makes a level of wage for every teacher from the very first step in the salary range. I can't think of another profession where teachers, where an employee, would be expected to come early, stay late, pay for supplies out of their own budget, go on field trips, go on science trips overnight sometimes. What teachers do is so about beyond what we would ask of any other profession, and I do think that we need to show them that we value them. I do think as a board, what our goal is is to prioritize teacher retention and making sure that we are compensating teachers in line with the rest of similar-sized districts.
The next question. It has a little bit of a preview, I guess, or intro. An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can move decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to effective operations of the board as a whole? So again, an individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to effective operations of the board as a whole? And Leslie, would you take that question first?
Yes. I pride myself on being level-headed and being able to see multiple sides to a situation. I am not set in my own opinion or my own ways. I'm open to the fact that I may have something to learn. I may be wrong. I believe that in order for the school board to reach consensus, you need to be open and be willing to explore those, those things, such as maybe that your original opinion on something might not be in the best interest of the district. Or maybe somebody has a better idea than you do, and that is okay because we all bring something to the table. So for me, what I would bring to the table is my openness and willingness to have hard conversations and to understand that everybody comes from a diverse background, and we all have our own talents, and they need to be appreciated and listened to.
Yes. The qualities that I would provide is that I do enjoy working with others, and I think that's absolutely essential. You have to be willing to listen. You have to be willing to listen, even when it's difficult on topics. And weigh what are the best options and the path to take. It's not about the individual as a board member. It's about the students. It's about supporting those teachers and providing the most comprehensive education that can be provided within the school district. So I do welcome those discussions. I do appreciate and see the respect in the interaction and transparency that goes with each decision that's made. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a really good question because, so the skills I, the way I tend to approach that is I try to just get the board, instead of making a big turn, you just start nudging the ship very slowly. And that's kind of how I, I'm pretty good at finding middle ground. I like to listen to people. I like to have conversations with people who I don't agree with. Or I see things that have different opinions. And that's the only way we learn. If you only talk to people you agree with, then no one's always learning anything. I think that's, I think that's as good, I think that's one of my, one of my better skills is I like to talk to people who I don't agree with and have, hopefully, learning conversations.
It's pretty important as a board that we do govern by consensus and that we do so through open discussions, through making sure every voice is heard and that we all research, get the data that we need to make effective decisions. One of my lesser-known skills was working on international development projects in the Middle East, specifically in the West Bank and Gaza between Israel. So I feel like if I can do that, So, I feel like if I can do that, I think I can be a pretty good listener here. I do have a pretty good skill set at seeing all sides of the equation. I have a lot of empathy, and I always try to think about how other people are feeling. And when other people have different points of view, it's important to respect that and to listen and try to understand where they're coming from. I think probably the most important thing that we can all do is to model this, so every single board meeting, every student who is watching sees how things are done and sees how good decision-making happens, so that they can go forth and be successful adults to do the same.
I have several years of board experience, and I currently work with a board comprised of seven directors of individual nonprofits that all have very diverse needs and diverse perspectives, and so it is a little bit like herding cats. What I bring to that, and what I feel I would bring to the school board, is not only a background in board governance and the proper, proper ways that you run a board so that voices are heard and consensus can be reached, but also a background in team facilitation and facilitating difficult discussions and moving people with diverse perspectives to a common consensus and a common goal. And one way you can do that is to separate the emotion, the emotional pieces. There are always things that are really emotional for people, and then there are other things that you can agree on that are easier, and if you separate those and you can come to agreement on what is easy first, you'll find that you've moved the mark, and it's then easier to move the group to consensus. But there are lots of other techniques you can use too.
Thank you all. Next question, different construct. On a scale of one to ten, what priority would you give to a new middle school? So on a scale of one to ten, what priority would you give to a new middle school? And Lori, would you start with this question?
On a scale from one to ten, when it comes to a new middle school, the immense amount of planning that has to go on in creating that school and environment, I don't know if I can give it a number, because it takes so many different perspectives and groups to come together and what is the best for not only constructing a school, but the environment which the students come and learn. It takes really the community to come together on this. You would have to be listening. What are the administrative needs? What are the students' needs? Classes, everything. So we're starting, literally, it sounds like we're starting from the beginning. Honestly, I can't, the priority of building a new school, fantastic, but how that starts has many layers.
Eight point five, pretty high. I assume we're talking about a new school in town. It's clearly the building with the highest needs. And we're getting there. We're, every year, taxpayers of this, of this district are paying down the mortgage that I like to refer to on the, the bill for this, for this wonderful new high school. And as we get closer to getting that paid off, we're going to be able to, you know, essentially take out another mortgage and invest in our buildings. And the building with highest needs clearly, clearly the, the middle school in town here. And we'll just, you know, many factors will, will factor how, how that goes, but you know, every year, we're paying this down, and the closer we get to paying this, paying this building off, we can start thinking about the next one.
On a scale of one to ten? Eleven. Here's the deal, when we talk about facilities, we have to look at a new middle school in context of the entire district in terms of all of our facilities. We do not currently have a permanent facilities committee. We should be planning for a new middle school, but also looking at all of our buildings, looking at deferred maintenance, and we should be doing that as we go along. That should be a permanent part of governance and how we run the district. As far as I'm concerned, it is not an if, it is when are we going to float the next bond? There is no question about this. There is a lot of lessons that we can learn. Oregon City just passed a huge bond, a hundred and fifty-eight million dollar bond. It took them two years of planning, two years PR, two years of working with the community collaborating to make that happen. In the end, what we want are buildings that reflect the excellent learning happening within them, and our kids deserve them.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on one. My fine colleague at the other table there just said, this, this is definitely a top priority, and, but, but so are all of the facilities, and we have to be able to look at things cohesively as one. We, we do tend, when we're really busy and where there's a lot going on, we tend to piecemeal things, and we tend to react in crisis mode and put out the fire that's in front of us. And if we could spend a little bit more of our processes and our time figuring out how to prevent those fires in the first place, or how to have a strategy around our facilities that's more comprehensive, and having the courage, the second thing I would say here is having the courage to have those really difficult conversations. We have to be able to be creative and collaborative, and we can't do that if we feel like there are things we can't talk about. So having the courage to say, you know what, what would it look like if? And maybe if we focused a little bit on what we would gain rather than what we would lose, it would bring people to the table, but we have to be able to have those conversations.
Ten. Absolutely, without a doubt, the middle school campus needs help. However, my saying that that is a ten, that doesn't take away from the fact that it could be, or either Mark Twain is a ten, or Evergreen is a ten. The middle school is not the only facility that has a need. Labeling a facility as a need of a ten doesn't take away from the fact that there's no funding for it. Every facility in our district could be a high need for maintenance, repair, or renovation, but without the funding, it's a problem. The current bond on the high school, I believe, expires in twenty, twenty-seven, and it's well-known in our district that there's a feeling in our community that there may not be a bond passed until that bond has been paid off or is closer to being paid off. So while I say that it's a ten, and it is, I wish that the funding was closer in our future. Oregon Department of Education does now offer a grant if a district passes a bond. I believe it's about four million, it's a sliding scale. That might help.
Next question. With regards to the community, its schools, the teachers, staff, students, and administration, where do you feel the loyalty of the school board lies? So with regards to the community, its schools, the teachers, staff, students, and administration, where do you feel the loyalty of the school board lies? And Tom, you get to start that one.
With the community as, as a whole. It's such an open question. It's, 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 our job is to serve the, the community, you know, not just, but, you know, you're, are, we're here to provide schools for the kids and good education, excellent education for the kids, but we got to do it in a way that fits in with the needs of the entire community, ties in with, it is, you know, it's about properly looking forward and planning school bonds, so that, so that, you know, so the tax bases, so the tax rates are reasonable, that people can agree upon it. It's about, it's about, it's about how the whole community works.
So, the role of the school board is to represent residents and schools, and I think above all, students have to be at the center of that. So every decision, every discussion, every budget should be prioritizing what's best for kids. It's a big club to wield, so to speak. There's a lot involved in governance, but when we make decisions, it's putting kids at the center. That's our only job, that, that's why we're here, than ordaining a school district without the kids involved. From my perspective, you know, my work has made me super aware of the impact of many different things on kids, including not getting what they need in terms of accommodations, or not getting the kind of reading help that they need. And as well, educators need to have what they need, but if we keep kids at the center, and then the next step out, if you think of this as rates, is, you know, our educators, our administrators, our schools, our community, it all kind of circles back. Kids need to be at the center so that our community can thrive.
Yeah, I would suggest that the loyalty, I, I, that word bothers me, because there isn't loyalty to a certain group. I think that's what gets us into trouble. I think it's loyalty to the best possible decision-making that sets our students up, all our students, for success. And sometimes those are hard, hard decisions to make where one party or another might feel snubbed, or that they, what they desired in that moment wasn't met. And that's the job of the board, is to be willing to make those difficult decisions, knowing that you are holding as your priority what is best for all the students of the district. I think what we really benefit from here in our community is that our community puts our students at the center. We, we just pivot around our students as a community, whether it be in sports, or academics, or theater, or, you know, whatever it is. And so I, I think that's such a great thing for the board to be able to, to leverage, that we have all that community support.
I agree with what Janice said about the word loyalty, that's, I, I would prefer focus, and I believe that as a board member, the first focus would be to the students. We need to be student-centered in our actions, our thoughts, and our approaches. As Dawn said, when you take care of the students, it will, it is a triple effect. Your teachers and your staff will be taken care of, and it continues on. However, we do also need to remember that our budget comes from tax dollars, and we need to make sure that we are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars in the process.
Well, yes, I'm going to basically echo what I've been hearing, but the students are the center, and again, the word loyalty doesn't quite sit comfortably. As a board member, my focus and desire is to be there for the students and see that the best decisions are made for their potential, for their education. And when you think about it, it's like taking the pebble and dropping it into the water and watching all the wonderful little waves and hoops that come out. Each of those, it's from the student, to the teachers, to the administration, and I do believe that our community is an extension of the classroom. And so loyalty, it's really about the students and what we can do best for them in their future. Thank you.
New area, I guess, or maybe, well, it does sort of relate to the last question. So, what are your thoughts about our district's current 100% graduation goal? What are your thoughts about our district's current 100% graduation goal? And Dawn, would you start that one, please?
It's a fantastic goal. We've been making really excellent progress towards it. We also, among other Oregon schools, are much higher than the Oregon average, which really says great things about our focus and about how we're getting the work done. My concern is that we also make sure that all groups of kids not only are graduating, but are graduating with the skills they need, either to pursue a career or to go to college, one or the other. I would like to see the district tracking information after graduation. The state of Oregon, I think you guys have heard about this, has a forty, forty, twenty vision. So forty percent of Oregon graduates should go to four-year schools, forty percent to two-year schools, twenty percent to career, a technical career that they are prepared for. So it's not just about graduation, but it's what happens afterwards. That's kind of the real test and the real, you know, tells us how we've done.
I understand why the district has a focus on graduation rates, obviously, because it is tied to our performance and how we're evaluated by the state, but I am also very concerned that, that we are missing the opportunity to capture data, as Dawn has said too, about how prepared our students are. So in a recent national study, about nine, over ninety percent of students said that they were interested in attending college, just as an example. Fewer than fifty percent of them felt that when they had graduated, they were prepared, they had been adequately prepared. And what I'd really like to be able to understand is, when our students go to college, four-year college, for example, and not all of them do, if they drop out, and, and quite a few of them do, why does that happen? Where have we not prepared them? So graduation is not the end for us, it's the beginning, it's the way to say, how well did we do, and how ready are they?
I think it's a lofty goal. I think that goals shouldn't be high, they should be uncomfortable, they should give you something to strive for, they should not be easy to reach. That said, in my work on the strategic vision plan recently, we had the chance to revisit some of the goals, and when talking about the vision, that was part of it, currently graduating 100% of students to improve the world, we talked about what that 100% means. What does that mean for, if we have a 90% rate, what does that mean for that 10% that didn't graduate? Are, are we not expecting them to improve their world or be ready? So we took great care with that, and we actually are proposing to the board, which, who knows, we'll see who it is, revisits that, and what we are proposing is each student graduates prepared to lead, lead a fulfilling life. So we're not going, we're suggesting that maybe that 100% is a little too lofty, and we need to be focusing on the individual student and their path instead.
I agree. I think that the 100% is, it's a very positive, high-reaching goal, but I think that we really do need to look at our students and prepare them and give them their needs, and especially, and I keep thinking about equity and equality. How are we meeting their needs as individuals? For them to feel confident, for them to find their potential and to move over, to move forward, and to keep their eye on that horizon of graduation. But you're right, graduation and then what? We really have to take a look at what our students are telling us and what they're needing for past graduation. And I have to say, I have been very pleased with seeing the CTE programs here. Also, I'm really just excited about talking to the teachers and seeing that they are doing, there's a lot of passion and care. I think we can work as a board and continue working towards that goal. Thank you.
Hundred percent graduation rate, yeah, it's, it's really the only, the only goal you can have. If you, if you dial it back to, say, ninety-seven, you're essentially telling three percent of the kids, you're, you're, you're right now, three percent. You can't write off any kid. It's a hundred percent, the goal of a hundred percent graduation rate is the ultimate equity statement. And our, 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 our high school administrators report to us every year as part of our strategic vision plan, they kind of, you know, we ask them, who's not graduating? And, and in generalities, they, they are clearly investigating who's not graduating, and any commonalities they can see, and they're clearly trying to find things to get that number even higher.
The next question. How does your vision for the Silver Falls School District include approaches to addressing and combating the issues of equity and discrimination affecting many of Silverton students? So how does your vision for the Silver Falls School District include approaches to addressing and combating the issues of equity and discrimination affecting many Silverton students?
So I, I think of the issue of equity a little bit differently, in terms of equal access to programs and resources and so forth, but I'll focus on the discrimination piece because I think the intent of the question is to get to, to some of that, I'll interpret it that way. So I think part of it is modeling the right culture and the right language at the board level. So that means using appropriate terminology, being informed, using culturally responsive language, really modeling what it is to be inclusive. And my experience working with people with disabilities is I have a very inclusive mindset, and so that just comes naturally, I think, to model that. And then the second thing at the student level, I think there's an opportunity for us to use our social-emotional learning curriculum to teach our students how to be inclusive and how to protect their peers and how to recognize the signs of discriminatory language and treatment.
I think that's a great question. I think, like Janice said, equity of services is a big thing. Without that, you lose engagement from a lot of students, and they lose their reason for coming to school and wanting to be there in the first place. So we need to make sure that we have a very diverse offering within our district to keep those kids engaged. As far as discrimination, that's been a hot topic in our, in our district for a few years now, and if, if you say it doesn't exist, your head is in the sand. It absolutely does exist. And I think one thing that could help with that is more diversity within our district. Our staff right now, according to 2017-18 information from ODE, our staff is 95% white. Our students are 80% identified as white, with 15% of our students identified as Hispanic and Latino, but only 1% of our teachers are. I think that if students could see more representation, see more people that look like themselves, it would help give them a boost in self-confidence, and we could all start standing up to the discrimination better.
It's been my long belief that discrimination usually results from either not understanding or simply not knowing. And we have to develop a sense of self-awareness, not only in ourselves as a board, but as students as a whole, the variety of when you think of cultures, when you think of religions. We have to be more aware of this. What makes us who we are? We are all unique and different. And those conversations and that education needs to be put in place. And we do need to start young with our children to understand this so it dissolves those barriers called discrimination. And it really is about knowledge. And we need to share that with our students and also definitely with our administrators and board. Thank you.
I want to piggyback off Leslie's answer. And one of the best ways to combat discrimination is to get teachers and staffs that look like the same population. And her stat was accurate. And I remember that that topic came up once. And one of the, one of the issues was that, we don't, I think we have 1% Latino teachers, but that's about the number, I don't have the stats off the top of my head, but there's very few Latinos who choose to go into the teaching profession. And so we need to encourage people from different groups to go in the teaching profession and, you know, encourage them and say, you have something to offer. And encourage them to, to join the, join the teacher, join the educational profession. Thank you.
I think, again, as a board, we have a huge responsibility when we look at big-picture issues like this. In terms of equity, that absolutely has to be formalized and codified in our strategic plan, in our policies, in our student handbooks. We know that we're not reaching all kids. And when we don't reach all kids, then there's always going to be a portion that do not score as high and do not graduate with as much frequency. A rising tide lifts all ships. This is not hard to figure out. We look at our lowest performing groups and we figure out how to bring them up while everyone can still get ahead. In terms of racism, honestly, this has been the most disturbing thing for me to witness at the high school. I have a freshman here, and on week one, he was coming home with, you know, comments about racist discriminatory remarks he heard in the hallways. And honestly, it's one of the things that encouraged me to run for the board and with his blessing. I refuse to believe that that is who we are. This is not who we are as a community. We need to look at ways to address that, practicing civil discourse, looking at advisory through curricula around teaching tolerance, and modeling diversity through hiring practices, as some of my colleagues have said here, deepening social-emotional learning at the high school, and tracking and evaluating how that happens to improve it.
Will you fight for the arts? This question says, "Our district needs more art and music. How will you direct administration with policy to incorporate more art and music?" So again, will you fight for the arts? Our district needs more art and music. How will you direct administration with policy to incorporate more art and music? And Jan starts this one. I'm sorry, Leslie starts this one.
I'm actually surprised it took us seven questions to get to this topic. It is a hot one in our district. And yeah, I absolutely do believe that the arts, including music, fine arts, all of that is important, without a doubt. I know that there's a lot of talk in the district about the fact that programs have been cut and maybe what's being offered in place is not adequate. I think that we do have a way of doing things here, as far as how our budgets go. I think that history does not always dictate the future. Yeah, perhaps it's time to start looking at how we do prioritize our budgets. And if we can mandate math, can we mandate another program as well?
Well, since I've spent a quarter of my life, or actually, I have, I guess I don't want to give away too much of my age, but almost, yeah, a half of my life, I'll say. Anyway, I've been teaching the arts. And I do know that when I am teaching to my students, the arts isn't just about picking up that brush and painting, it's about connecting all the other things that we study and learn. We look at Fibonacci sequence, we find this in design, design in nature, in us, in paintings. We look at physics and light and how do we blend, thank you, but I'm going to go for a little while here. We talk about physics and how we have added to life, it's attractive, color schemes. Art, when you think about it, helps us to connect the dots into those other subjects that we're required to learn. It's not just a frill, it's an enrichment, but it's very much feeds our minds and develops our sense of craftsmanship, our sense of logic and learning. And I do want to say, as an analogy, imagine a piece of fabric that's woven, and you look at how tightly it's woven. Pick it up and start plucking away theater arts, dance, the studio arts, pulling away music. And that piece of fabric becomes very weak and it has holes in it. Imagine what that is, how education would look like without the arts. We need the arts to have a comprehensive education and for the development of our children as well, their minds, their potential. Yes, the fine arts.
Am I going to fight? I'm going to listen. The funding is tight, resources are tight, we have a lot of state mandated things that we have to do. And I believe that the solutions, the message has been heard loud and clear. I've never heard a board member speak against it, you know, privately or in public. What I, what I, what I know is that I'd like to, I'd like to try to behind the scenes connect the dots and try to get the solutions to filter out. And I think they are. Like, we had a great board-to-board session at Scotts Mills, and the PE teacher had a dance that was incredible. And there was a social studies lesson in there about how the dancer resonated from something in the Philippines and a slave. I can't remember what all it was, but clearly that teacher was doing three or four things at once, PE, music and dance, and social studies. It was, it was pretty neat. So anyway, I'm confident we'll get there.
The first, I can't believe no one's gotten so far, choir won the STEEP championship. And next week, there's still another opportunity. Next week, our wind ensemble from the high school is going to state. They have such strong music and art programs in this school district. I don't think anybody debates that art and music is an essential part of education. The benefits are well-proven, this is science, there's no debate here. I grew up with mandatory music and art. I grew up in New York State. Starting in third grade, it was optional, from fourth grade through eighth grade, it was mandatory. You were in band music, sorry, band orchestra music theory or choir, those were your choices, but that was it. You didn't get to opt out. What that did for me and what that did for my education, I can't even describe. So how do we do what needs to get done? You know, also, we've adopted the Common Core, Oregon has adopted the Common Core. This is part of our standard. We actually have an obligation to do music education, to do art. And I think what the board role is to get this prioritized, to figure out how to allocate resources, to come up with creative partnerships, and to get this into our schools from kindergarten through 12.
So many, even though Dawn's absolutely right, this is absolutely true, we don't need to be arguing about it, and we're not, but I need to put a plug in because art at the elementary level, the arts, I should say, is the way children learn, it's how they play. And, and when children play and they find their creativity, they are fully immersed in learning. At the high school level, I have watched kids stay in school because of art. It's where they find their people, it's where they find their voice. So if we're really concerned about kids graduating and kids succeeding academically, we will make sure that they need, that they get what they need in the arts. And in terms of the board role in that, you know, you set your priorities and then the budget follows. You decide what's important to your district and what you want to achieve, and then you find the money for it, not the other way around.
This question will let you dreamers, okay? So you can picture in your mind, it says, "If the student success act passes, what do you hope to do with the money? If the student success act passes, what do you hope to do with the money?" And Lori starts this one.
Money and what to do with it, wow, that's deep and wide. I think if, especially with our schools and our programs, I would want to really have the board work on collecting data, talking, interviewing the teachers, the administration, and where that money can be best utilized. We're talking about being wise with our fiscal amount, and we have to see where the school district needs it and what programs we can develop. I mean, it is a budgetary question, and we would have to be extremely responsible, but making sure that we listen to all the parties to make the absolute best decision.
Music and arts, that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much what we need, more staffing and some music and arts, a little more, a little more fighter. Oh gosh, I'm going to miss the term, a little more, more enrichment in kids' life, you know, the music. I mean, I'm an engineer, there's, there's, there's arts in what I design, it's there. When a hydraulic machine is running properly, it sounds like music to me. I mean, it's, it's, but yeah, that's what I do with money, or advocate for.
This'll be a great day when this happens. We're halfway there, right? We're about to the house, just got to get through the sentence next. So here's how I would start. Literacy first. When kids aren't reading proficiently, they can't access their education and any other subject. Equity be alongside that, making sure every single school provides an excellent education to every single child, I don't care what race they are, their income level, what their learning differences are. We meet everybody where they are. We provide those well-rounded programs, including art and music. And why not, let's do facilities too, that reflect, that are really worthy of public education. Every teacher in my perfect world will have what they need, the professional development, the curricula, the materials that they need. And the best part, we can absolutely make this dream happen, we need to plan it. It may take us 20 years, but we need to look at, what do we do first, second, third? What do we prioritize? And let's get it in a plan.
Yeah, I'm going to pivot on planning because that's sort of my, that's my jam. We, we need to be really ambitious. If this, if this funding comes through, it creates an amazing opportunity for us. And I'm a little concerned that we don't have a ready list of priorities already established. We should, you know, even though we don't get a windfall very often, we should know what those priorities are. But generally, I would like to see us planning in a more visionary way and in a more specific way, where our strategic plan really drives our operational plan, where we are really working our plan. And then our strategic plan is now 10 to 15 years out. We should have a vision for the district where we know where we're going, not just sort of vaguely what it looks like when we get there, but how we set those benchmarks for ourselves and achieve them in a consistent way. And that's what, and then I think, you know, really, the sky's the limit.
So dream big, okay. So I'm going to dream this is big, and there are no restrictions that tell us what we can or can't spend it on. I would agree, facilities are an issue that we would want to address. I know that there's currently, or just completed, there was a audit done of our facilities to prioritize what the needs are and where it costs. So that would give us a very good starting point to at least hit something for all of our, all of our schools. I would love to see an investment in the arts. But I think also what would be important is still, let's ask our staff, let's ask our teachers, what do you need, what do you want, what's important to you? Because if I say that I think, and I do think that we need to invest in professional development beyond what is in the budget most likely, when it breaks down to a per teacher amount, it really isn't that much. But is that what you want? Is that what our teachers are wanting? Or do they feel that that money would be better invested in another way? So I have my ideas, but I think it's a community decision that really we need to get input from multiple sources to really form our dream.
So after getting a chance to figure out how to spend money, now we get back to managing a district. One of the board's responsibilities is to oversee, manage, and support the superintendent. How do you see yourself supporting and holding the superintendent accountable? So one of the board's responsibilities is to oversee, manage, and support the superintendent. How do you see yourself supporting and holding the superintendent accountable? And Tom, you're the first one on this one.
Yeah, thank you. The board has one employee, the superintendent. You know, we don't, we don't hire anybody else, he, she is, is, is our one employee. We manage, we get input, we get performance reviews, we do all kinds of things. And you hold them accountable, he sets standards, and you hold them accountable for those. It really isn't more so than that, but I like to try to make it as collaborative as possible. You don't want to get it to the point to where it's, it's a confrontation. You want to, you know, yeah, you see somebody have a conversation, you, you bring it up in a board meeting, you try to head things off in the past before it becomes, you try to keep things as collaborative as possible.
So when we are looking at supporting our one employee and evaluating our one employee and supporting him or her in terms of making sure they get what they need, I think really the answer is that we have to put the time in as board members. We have to be informed, we have to be asking the right questions. We should probably each have a specialization that we can take lead on and to do that research and pull that data together. When we put the time in to be informed and to get involved, we can be effective. I think that's a really big point, and I think that's, it's pretty key in managing any employees. You know, in my own business, it's really getting input from them and really helping them see my vision for my work and for my clinic, that I want them to go ahead and help me implement. So it's really no different in this situation, except the stakes are a lot higher.
So the board has a responsibility to set policies that are aligned with community values, working with the community to set a vision, but also setting goals for student achievement. And I think- And I think that one gets lost sometimes, not necessarily here in this district, but in general. People forget that the board is accountable to the community for those goals of, for student achievement. So one way I think you can support your superintendent is by making those goals a little bit more specific and more tangible and more workable. And then to always be asking the question, why? So if those goals weren't met, rather than saying, you know, okay, well now here's some sort of punitive consequence, let's collaborate, let's work together and figure out why those goals weren't met. What resources did you need that we did not provide you? Because that's our job as the board, is to make sure you have the resources you need to achieve those goals. So I would absolutely agree with my colleagues that, that collaboration, we're trying routine and we're trying to move the ball down the field. We're not trying to beat each other up. And so you just need to be able to ask those questions and have those conversations.
Absolutely. You know, the board's, one of the board's purposes is to oversee our one employee, the superintendent. I think that measurable goals are key. A goal without a way to measure it is pointless. So setting measurable goals and expectations, possibly with timelines, quantifying these, these expectations is important. Communication and collaboration, like it's been said, is of the utmost importance because without it, how do you communicate what your expectations are, what, what the superintendent will be measured against? If they don't know what they are expected to do in our eyes, then we're setting them up to fail whoever it may be. And one thing that we do at the county, in fact, I just got an email from a manager today, is when your performance review is coming up, the manager emails your colleagues, not necessarily your department even, but who else are you working with within our county or within the district? And to see what their experience is working with you, what are your strengths, room for improvements, that sort of thing. And I think that getting honest feedback can be hard, but it is important.
Here I am. And I, I'm hearing all these wonderful things and I agree. I do believe that it is a collaborative process and really the core of it has to be clear, open communication, transparency and that integrity. There has to be that mutual trust that goes back and forth as we talk and say, what is it that our goals are, our policies? What is it that we want to say? What is the best outcome? And not just seeing where we're at now, but where we're going to be down the road. We have to be able to look ahead and keep our focus on the students and what is best. And so as long as we can exercise that collaborative effort, working, sharing and having that level of integrity, we can continue to move forward.
So now we're going to some sort of outside issues, although important for any school district. What is your position, if any, on House Bill 3063 in Oregon removing non-medical exemptions for vaccinations for students? So what is your position, if any, on House Bill 3063 in Oregon removing non-medical exemptions for vaccinations for students? And Dawn, you begin this one.
One huge responsibility of the school district is to keep its kids safe. There is certainly a number of children who are unable to be fully vaccinated for medical reasons. I think it is the job of the school district to make sure that herd immunity is intact. That means making some pretty tough choices. A lot of parents, well, I wouldn't say a lot of parents. There are certainly subgroups of parents who make that choice to not vaccinate their kids and that's a hard choice too. They know what's at risk. However, I do believe that the baseline of vaccinations keeps us all safe. And for kids that can't receive vaccinations or who are sick, it's their only chance to be safe. I'm leaving in about two weeks, well, actually two days after the election's done, to visit my best friend whose daughter has leukemia. And I'm gonna, I'm checking with doctors, what do I need before I go? That's our responsibility as adults and unfortunately it sometimes is our choice to make, but it's what needs to be done.
That's a great question and I agree with Dawn. I know, I know it's a really sensitive subject and I know people really struggle with it. I completely understand that, but we are a district whose priority is the health and safety of our children. And you certainly have a choice as a parent if you choose not to vaccinate your child, to educate them elsewhere. And I know that sounds really harsh, but we, we have to keep kids safe. And there are kids who are immunocompromised, there are adults who are immunocompromised. And just I think the recent outbreak of measles across this country has just demonstrated that we can't take those things for granted. So I, I think it's a great question and it's a difficult one, but if, you know, if we have to make a decision, which we will have to do, I would say I would, I would support that.
That is a loaded question. I definitely see the value in removing exemptions, except for when medically necessary. My, one of my colleagues at work had a grandchild born prematurely by multiple weeks and if he were to be exposed to the measles or something, that could be very damaging for him or heaven forbid, something worse. I think we have a responsibility to protect our young children and one way we do that is through vaccines. However, that said, there is a part of the bill that makes me uneasy and that is giving the health authority the complete control over dealing what is a medically necessary required vaccine. That is my only concern with, with the bill as it stands.
It's absolutely a priority to lower the risk and to provide safety to the students. I, I do, and I know this is incredibly sensitive, but I do believe that we should have vaccinations. There are those who have a lower immune system. There are those that are compromised and if we don't have certain safeguards in place, you are jeopardizing those that immune systems aren't as strong. Right now, the measles is growing, the outbreak. I was hearing that today on the news and, and it's heartbreaking. People are getting exposed and they are experiencing, if not death, near death experiences. So I do support vaccinations to keep the greater whole safer.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with everybody up here. Dawn, great answer for right, right out of the gate. I mean, yeah, you, you have to maintain the herd immunity and it really, I know it's hard. Everyone's really expressed every feeling I have on it. I know that it's, that it's hard. Doctors have worked for generations to eradicate these diseases and I think we need to keep them that way.
So this is going to be the last question for the group because of time and all of that. So this one asks, what type of funding and programs would you hope or expect to see in our district to support the mental health of our students? So what type of funding and programs would you hope or expect to see in our district to support the mental health of our students? And Janet, we're back to you, starting this one.
This is a subject that is close to my heart. So I really applaud the fact that we now have more counselors available to our students. I think that was an important step in the right direction. It's just not enough, but that is partly a funding issue. Now, the nice thing about this bill, Student Success Act, actually makes money available for mental health. So that's great news. What I would like to do though is also equip our community and our students to be able to handle those issues better as a community. And so that includes removing the stigma around having these conversations. Our kids are talking about suicide. We need to be able to talk about suicide with each other and with our children. There were some great articles recently in our town that addressed that and, and I think that's a great way to get these conversations started and to start getting comfortable with that. And then the other thing is that I would like to see more resources available that I think as a community, we can really wrap around our students of high need, whether they be homeless or struggling with mental health issues. I'm already actually having conversations with some individuals in our, in our community to partner with them, to maybe develop some sort of a student resource center to be able to provide those resources.
Mental health is a huge issue right now, not just in Silver Falls School District, but nationwide. I think that we see something in our social media theater on the news every day about something going on related to mental health. I think that we need to make sure that we are providing adequate services. As Janet said, counseling is huge. We have recently made great improvement in that area in our district, but there is always room for growth. I think that what, at high school, if you don't know, on the back of all of our students' ID cards, there's a phone number that they can call if they are feeling the need to talk to somebody about something going on in their life. And I think that's a great resource for the students. However, it's also not a 24/7 phone number. So there is again, room for improvement. The types of funding, I'll be the first to say it, I don't know. I don't know what our funding options are outside of our regular budget. I would, I would imagine that there are grants, there are different opportunities to apply for help in this area that could help us bolster our mental health services and peer support. It'd be huge because if, if our kids aren't comfortable talking to us or a staff member, then I would pray that they can talk to their grandparents.
I absolutely agree. When we look at issues such as homelessness and mental health, there is that stigma and we start to whisper it or we don't talk about it, but we need to. And we, we do the funding. I don't know what is out there, but it is not just a national problem, a global problem. We do need to find the funding to provide these adequate resources for students. And like you said, having that phone number, that's fantastic, but they need more than that too. And I absolutely agree with Janet that to have a resource center where students feel comfortable, where they don't feel like they're being outcast and they can come forward and talk about it openly and honestly is absolutely needed. So we do need to work on that and develop it definitely because it's certainly not going to go away.
Yeah. We've added counselors to all the schools and I don't think we've heard, when the administrators of the schools come up and present, I don't think, I think every one of them has thanked us for the counselors. They said that it's helped, it's made a big difference. And I guess I would, if I could just try to address the core problems, I sometimes wonder about the amount of screen time and social media, where our minds get lost inside of the screen. You know, and algorithms are, in order to increase our engagement, are, it impacts everything. The articles I'm reading about are just amazing and I, I wonder what we could do to, what, what, what processes a school district could do to wean us away from our screens. I think that would help.
Another little known part about my background, I actually ran a teen clinic, a peer-based teen clinic when I worked in public health and community health. And I'm pretty familiar with what's going on in terms of mental health needs. I kind of see this as two parts. One is preventive. So helping kids get the skills they need and get the support they need before it becomes this intermountable problem. So one example of the ways that we could do that are, you know, looking at our social emotional learning curriculum, adding a piece that talks about self-regulation. If anyone has a tag kid who really his behaviors are maybe not what we would want, you know what I'm talking about. That can happen both in the curriculum and also with counseling. And I think we need an evaluation piece that's currently not being used right now with our social emotional learning curriculum. In terms of reactive strategies, I would love to see the number of student success advocates increase at the high school. This is essentially case management for our teams. Finally, I think looking at, you know, what teachers have told me, looking at additional training in mental health so that teachers can help their kids. And also looking at the number of counselors, you know, my school tells us we could have the counselor every single day and we'll keep her busy. So how do we get increased resources in our schools' run counselor?
So before I hand the microphone back to Nancy, I just want to thank the audience for some really wonderful questions. I think that they gave the candidates real, real things to think about and things that you can now use as you make your decisions and get ready to vote. I want to thank Silver Falls School District and the Education Association for allowing me to have this role because it was really fun to get to do this. And I want to thank the candidates for running. And as the former social sciences specialist for the state, thank you for stepping up to your civic duty. For all of us to remember to vote.
Thank you for coming out tonight and thank you candidates for exactly what Andy said, stepping up for this opportunity. I know it's important to teachers. Silver Falls especially thanks you all for coming out. I realize the Blazers are in game two tonight. I know Ted, I can see the thought bubbles over your head. Anybody know the score? Come on now, somebody does. Brady, it's probably you. Anyway, thank you very much for coming out. I know it was probably not the best night, but the auditorium was hot property in May, so we had to take the night when we could. If you have any questions, feel free to, I'm sure, reach out to the candidates. They're very out there and active on public social media and you can talk to any of the SFEA members as well on your way out, should you choose to. Thank you very much.